Everyone, the League of Women Voters of Alameda, Berkeley, Albany, Emeryville, Eden Area, Fremont, Newark, Union City, Oakland and Piedmont would like to welcome you to tonight's voter forum for the candidates for the Alameda County District Attorney's race. I'm Nancy Benenati from the Piedmont League and I'm very pleased to see such such a robust turnout for tonight's event. Our candidates for the Alameda County District Attorney are Pamela Price and Terry Wiley. It's good to see you both here tonight and I want to thank you for being here. I'm also very excited that we will have Spanish and Cantonese interpreters for this event. Welcome and thank you to Andrea Roca, Hernán Laffit, Weiqun Tang and Harvey Tai, who are working with us to provide this important voter information to a wider audience. I will ask the Spanish interpreter and then the Cantonese interpreter to give participants watching this video instructions in each language so that anyone can access the correct Zoom channel in the language of their choice.
Si, muy buenas tardes. Para accesar el servicio en español, por favor háganle clic a un globo del mundo en la parte inferior de su pantalla y ahí elijan el cuarto de español con la bandera de España. Ahí estaré yo esperándoles. Gracias.
Hey, ah,大家好. Ah, 今晚呢个系论坛呢，系啊将会系有多种语言系提供系翻译嘅. 哎，好啊，荣幸能够帮大家去做翻译。Thank you.
Thank you both. I'd like to next present a little background information about the Office of District Attorney before we begin. The district attorney is the county official responsible for prosecution of criminal violations of state law and county ordinances occurring within the county. While the district attorney's duties are not limited to criminal prosecution, the district attorney's main duty is investigating and prosecuting criminal offenses on behalf of the people. The district attorney's other duties include presenting evidence to the grand jury, deciding which cases to prosecute, investigating and prosecuting civil and criminal cases involving fraud and unfair business practices, as well as other matters such as environmental protection. You are here because you want to make smart choices when you vote. The league is here to help you make a smart choice using a few simple rules to ensure that you have the information you will need to and you will make a decision through a fair and balanced process. It is important to the league to give the community a voice, which is why we have invited the community to send us questions ahead of time for the candidates. Those questions have been sorted by a team of league leaders to avoid duplicate questions and to select those questions that are most important to the community. We will not be taking questions during this forum. You'll notice that the Q and A and chat features have been turned off to minimize distraction. I will remind the candidates of some of the key ground rules and so that the audience understands them as well. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. To keep the discussion flowing, candidates will be expected to keep answers to one and a half minutes. These will be timed and the timer clock will be seen by everyone. In order to be fair to the other candidate, if you run over, I will need to ask you to wrap up your remarks. We'll switch up the order so each candidate has a chance to answer first. Ahead of tonight's forum, I flipped a coin and Ms. Price will be going first. At the end of the Q and A section, each candidate will have one minute to provide a closing statement. And so with that, I will ask Pamela to please provide her opening statement. You will have two minutes.
The timer. I don't see it. Will I be able to see the timer?
I see the timer. I am not sure why you cannot see the timer.
Maybe because I have my view is wrong. I apologize. Let me try. There it is. Okay. Can you restart it? And sorry. Thank you. Okay. My name is Pamela Price and I'm running for Alameda County District Attorney because I am a drum major for justice. For thirty years, I've worked in this community successfully arguing against racial harassment and holding corporations and government institutions and police agencies accountable and are creating new laws against sexual harassment and sexual assault in both education and employment. I've been a Northern California super lawyer every year since 2004, but I'm also a survivor of the Ohio Juvenile Justice and the Foster Care System. And I literally made it from the streets of Cincinnati to Yale College by the grace of God. I've been in the civil rights movement and an advocate for racial and social justice since I was thirteen years old. I decided to run for this seat because for too long prosecutors have forgotten that their mission is to protect public safety by advancing justice. Prosecutors have been at the heart of mass incarceration. My mission is to bring a new vision of transparency and equity and accountability to the Alameda County District Attorney's Office and to make it, create a criminal justice system that works for all of us and not just the wealthy and the powerful in this county. I have been, um, I'm the first person to run for this since nineteen sixty-six and we've had an appointed district attorney since nineteen thirty-nine. I've been a champion for women and gender rights since nineteen seventy-seven. I've been endorsed by Fund Her and Elect Black Women PAC and Black Women Organized for Political Action and the Honorable Delane Easton and the Honorable Desi Woods Jones, the first woman to run for mayor of Oakland and the Honorable Jean Kwan, the first female mayor of Oakland, Angela Davis and Reverend Wanda Jackson, the mother of Oscar Grant, and a host of civil rights and community leaders throughout this county who know that I will stand for justice for our youth, for our families and for our community. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Terry, you're you're next.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for having me also. Uh, my name is Terry Wiley and I'm running for Alameda County District Attorney. You know, we have a district attorney's office that needs new leadership. It has to be leadership that is about safety and justice. My experience as chief assistant district attorney has enabled me to personally understand the strengths, weaknesses and potential of the office. You know, since the primary election, I've been endorsed by all four of the five members of the Board of Supervisors. And today we announced the endorsement of California Attorney General Rob Bonta. I've been endorsed by all of the mayors in Alameda County with the exception of three. And I think it's because I represent balanced and experienced leadership. You know, you want to build a working partnership with local police departments, the newly elected sheriff and the Alameda Courts and the Board of Supervisors so we can provide effective law enforcement with fairness and justice. You know, I'm the youngest of twelve kids and an identical twin. My dad died when I was seven. So I came up with no illusions of what I was going to have to do to make something of my life in order to be, uh, to build a life for myself and my family. And so I come with great compassion and sensitivity to this role as district attorney. I want to make sure that our staff understands trauma-informed care and that we have evidence-based practices when we're providing services. And I think that in the end, you know, this is a hundred million dollar government agency that requires someone that has a steady hand to run the organization. We have two hundred and four, or we have four hundred and thirty-five employees in three major divisions. It is a complicated agency to run and I have the experience, but more importantly, I bring the doubt, the balance and maturity to run the district attorney's office. Thank you.
Thank you both. I will launch right into the first question for Pamela. If elected DA, what are your top three priorities?
Number one is to bring transparency and equity and accountability to the office. This office belongs to the people of Alameda County and it needs to serve the people of Alameda County. And so that's the number one job that I will have as we work to transform the office so that it in fact reflects the values of Alameda County, that we have an office that has, that is trans, operates as a transparent office that operates from integrity and accountability to this community. So that's number one, the job that I have to start on day one. I also want to make sure that my office is providing effective services for those who are suffering from mental health challenges and addiction challenges because that's an area where we have failed and where the how the United States Department of Justice has made it clear that we are, um, on the inverted receivership if we don't address that. And the DA has an important role to play with that. Again, gun violence is something that is very significant for me as a resident, a longtime resident of Alameda County and a resident of East Oakland. I understand that we have too many guns and that we have to be very aggressive about how we control gun violence in this community. And so that's one of the priorities and dealing with young people coalesces with that because a lot of times we, if we can intervene with young people, we can reduce the level of gun violence in this community.
Good question, Terry.
I guess I, you know, I think that the, the, my top three priorities, you know, as the district attorney, you are the, uh, number one law enforcement officer and the safety of the community has to be at the forefront of what you do as a district attorney. And I think that anyone on this call cannot deny that, you know, today there appears to be a feeling of lawlessness out there. And I think that the first priority of my administration would be to address, uh, the level of violence, violent crimes, serious crimes and just the feeling of lawlessness that is taking place in the community. I have a very specific plan, how I want to address it. You know, we know that there were about two thousand individuals in Alameda County that are driving about seventy percent of the violent crime, uh, in the county and I have a specific program to address those individuals. Secondly, I think you have to be, do a massive expansion of those that qualify for drug diversion and mental health programs. Thirdly, I think you have to address, uh, the victimization of Asians, the, so the anti-Asian violence that's occurring with, that has dramatically increased, uh, since COVID. Also, the preying on our juveniles and on our elderly has to be addressed. And those would be my top priorities, uh, from day one in the district attorney's office.
Thank you. Um, and Terry, you will answer the next question first. Tying into what you were just talking about a little bit, district attorneys wield a tremendous amount of power when it comes to charging someone with a crime. Someone's personal freedom is at stake. Are there certain types of crime that you believe are better left to be dealt with outside of the criminal prosecution system? Why or why not?
I, I, yes, I absolutely do. I, I think that, let me just talk first from the part, the, the perspective of charging crimes. Uh, I think that Alameda County and particularly the city of Oakland has an unusually high number of serious and violent felonies that are occurring on, on a daily basis. And that goes from murder, carjackings, robberies, that all, any number of, of deaths using force or violence, uh, to commit those deaths. So I think that you, you have to address those. But I think when you look at the non-violent property crimes, then I think that those are the crimes where you can find alternatives to incarceration and diversion programs to try to get individuals on a different trajectory because we know that those are the majority of crimes that people commit and many of them are, uh, the, the reason behind many of those crimes are object poverty, substance abuse, mental health issues. And so those are the crimes that you want to find alternatives to try to help the person, whether it be with a substance abuse problem or a mental health issue or in that, as I say, you know, some of these crimes are motivated by people just living in object poverty. And I think that you have to bring a certain amount of compassion and sensitivity as the district attorney and set policies that are going to address those issues. Where, where, so that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Pamela.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. District attorneys wield a tremendous amount of power when it comes to charging someone with a crime. Someone's personal freedom is at stake. Are there certain types of crime that you believe are better left to be dealt with outside of the criminal prosecution system? Why or why not?
Yes, I do believe that, um, a number of the kinds of misdemeanors that we've seen charged currently in the DA's office, which charges about seventy percent of the charges, more than seventy percent that the DA's office currently charges are misdemeanors. Um, and so we know that there's a great need to shift the focus from low-level crimes that are related to quality of life, to homelessness, uh, to drug addiction or mental illness. Those things need to be going into alternative, um, justice systems and we need to expand our access to those. And I've also proposed creating a system of neighborhood courts that allows, um, people in the community to hold folks accountable and help us to resolve the things that divide us, that often spir, could spiral out of control and where police are called and then someone ends up going to jail. And so we know that there's a desperate need to increase, um, the pipeline out of the criminal justice system into alternative justice mechanisms and to focus on serious and violent crime. And that's what I would do because the backlog that we have and the failed system that where we see now, yes, to the extent crime is spiraling, it's, the DA's office has failed to hold people accountable effectively, whether it's violent crime or non-violent crime.
Thank you. Um, and you will have the, the next question first. Encampments for those without housing have become common throughout Alameda County. Will you prosecute cases involving crimes related to those who are living on the streets? Why or why not? And as part of your answer, please let, please explain what you would do to address this problem from within the district attorney's office.
Sure. Homelessness is not a crime and it's a failure of our system and particularly our county, um, our county departments and our county's functioning. Our county does not address mental illness effectively. And so we're cycling people between being homeless and going to John Jordan, going to Santa Rita. And as a district attorney, I will no longer be someone that goes along with that and doesn't in fact, uh, participate in a conversation, if not lead the conversation about how do we respond to people who are unhoused, whether and what the challenges that they face. Many people who are unhoused do not commit crimes. And so often what we see in these encampments, unfortunately, there's different things that happen. People are vulnerable in an encampment because they're unhoused in the first place and there are folks out there that need help. And so as the district attorney, my role will be to work with behavioral health services to make sure that we are providing, increasing our services, that we're using the money that I control as part of reentry to make sure that when people are coming from state prison or being released from the county jail, that they're not going back being forced into homelessness to the extent that I can stem the tide. As a former foster kid, I'm acutely aware that foster kids need support and that they often end up being homeless. So I see the district attorney as an effective partner with other agencies and compelling the county to really come up with an effective response to the problem. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Encampments for those without housing have become common throughout Alameda County. Will you prosecute cases involving crimes related to those who are living on the streets? Why or why not? And as part of your answer, can you please provide what you would do to address this problem within the district attorney's office?
Yes. Uh, thank you for the question. Well, I think there's a couple of things. You know, we have seen a astronomical growth, uh, in the number of homeless encampments, but also the number of individuals that we see are suffering, uh, some form of mental illness. And, uh, many of those that are in, uh, the homeless encampments, many of them are dual diagnosis in that they are suffering mental health issues and they're also, uh, self-medicating with either drugs or alcohol, which brings on another series of problems. Uh, and in terms of how we deal with it on, from a, from a crime perspective, you know, honestly, it just depends on what the crime is. You know, because some of the crimes that we see occurring in some of the homeless encampments are anything from murder, uh, to serious assault, arson, any number of different serious crimes. So it just depends on what kind of threat the individual poses to the rest of society as to what, how the case is prosecuted. But I do think that there needs to be a number of services and an expansion of services that are provided to the homeless. One is, and I know the county is considering providing medical care, our access to medical care, to, uh, many members that are homeless so that, uh, their, uh, whatever their homeless issue is or whatever the mental illness issue is, can be treated with medical care. So I think that's a good start.
Thank you. And the first, you answer the next question first as well, Terry. What standards or policies will you put into place regarding the district attorney's position with respect to requesting remand to jail, bail, including the amount of the bail request and then release?
Yeah. Well, that's a great question, uh, because and it's something that, uh, as district attorneys that we have to deal with all the time. Because see, a lot of times people think when an individual is arrested and then they're brought to court, that, you know, district attorneys will say, well, we oppose bail. What, what actually happens is, is many of the individuals that you see in custody today in Santa Rita are individuals who, I have picked up a new case and then you find that they have several other pending cases, not only in Alameda County, but other counties. And they also have holds on those warrants from other counties. And, uh, so as a general rule, the majority of individuals that are coming into the system are coming in are non-violent property crimes. Uh, and many of those, uh, individuals are released from custody. And the individuals that pose the biggest threat and those that are arrested for any kind of serious or violent felony, and we're talking about robberies, uh, murders, attempted murders, those are the individuals that pose a threat to the community. And then as a prosecutor, we have to make an assessment as to whether or not, what is the level of threat that this, that if this individual is back out in the community, what are the chances that this, uh, person is likely to reoffend? And those are the assessments that we make every day.
Thank you. Pamela?
And the question would be, I'm sorry.
The question is, um, what's, what standards or policies will you put into place regarding the district attorney's position with respect to requesting remand to jail, bail, including the amount of the bail request and then release?
Um, part of the problem that we see in Alameda County, which is consistent across the country is that bail is used in a punitive manner to, um, coerce plea bargains because our system essentially operates off of plea bargains. Also, what we've seen in Alameda County, which is consistent across the country, is the racial disparities. And if you go to Santa Rita County Jail or the juvenile facility, you will see that anywhere, certainly in Santa Rita, anywhere from fifty to sixty percent of all the people there are black. And when you add in the Latino population, it goes up even higher. And so as the first duty of, uh, district attorney, I have to stop the racial and I have to root out the racial inequities that we have seen that have become normalized in this system, both the juvenile system, particularly the juvenile system where black and brown children are eighty-six percent of all juvenile felony arrests and they're the ones that are, uh, under, um, the authority of the juvenile authorities, uh, to an overwhelming degree because they're less than thirteen percent of the population. Then things similarly with the adult population. So we've got to be, get to get a handle on immediately. Why is it that only black and brown people are being incarcerated in this county? And what can we do to remediate that harm that undermines and destabilize communities of color across the county? That's a critical element of it. We've got to look at bail from the perspective of the California Supreme Court, which said that it's unconstitutional. And so I will be looking to implement bail policies that are constitutional. Whether your, the amount of your wealth should not determine whether or not, uh, you are able to get out of jail. And I apologize, I cannot see the timer. Let me go back. I apologize.
The next question is, is for you, Pamela. What is your position on those that are arrested for selling sex? And as part of your response, please discuss how you would, um, treat individuals who are trafficked.
Sure. This office, uh, the current DA's office has a terrible history of prosecuting women who were trafficked, whether they were underage or after they had aged down into the adult system. There's repetitive arrest. My position will be that we should not be prosecuting women. We should be trying to address the problem of sex trafficking. We continue to be, uh, one of the largest hubs in the country for sex trafficking and we continue to criminalize women and we continue to, um, accept a rape culture that allows black and brown women to be raped and kidnapped and killed and exploited on the streets of, of Alameda County and particularly in Oakland. But it happens around the county. So as district attorney, I will take an aggressive position to get to the root of those who are enabling traffickers, who are enabling people, uh, to be able to take advantage of women. And we will expand the programs that are available to women, uh, who want to get out of the life. I understand the challenges that young women face in particular, having been on the streets at one point myself. I know how important it is that we provide resources, that we provide support, that we do so in a non-judgmental way and that we hold men accountable who are the ones that are leading the exploitation of women in this county and have been allowed to do so for far too long.
Thank you. Terry, same question?
Yeah, I, I think it's important, uh, to understand that in Alameda County, we've been one of the leading offices in the country in terms of the manner in which we address human trafficking, providing assistance and recognizing, identifying and assessing the correlation many times between domestic violence, human trafficking and the commercial sex exploitation and prostitution. And understanding that one in four women will experience domestic violence at some point in her life. Domestic violence is the single greatest cause of injury to women. Women are seven more times, are seven times more likely, uh, to be victims of a violent assault from, uh, a current or former intimate partner. Uh, sixty-one percent of women that pros, that, that are prostitutes have been raped one or more times. I mean, the statistics are just unbelievable. Uh, the trauma that many of the women involved in the sex trade are subjected to. And despite all of that, uh, and despite, uh, putting greater emphasis on, uh, focusing on the pimps and prosecuting the pimps and, uh, not prosecuting, uh, the, the women, you know, Oakland still remains a hub of human trafficking, particularly in the San, San Antonio District of Oakland. And I, I literally have met with, uh, some of the experts in human trafficking and trying to discuss that, look, if I should be blessed to be elected district attorney, how are we going to deal with this issue? We've seen a number of different approaches tried and, you know, it's, so it's really going to take a, a lot of discussion to figure out how to change, uh, this. Thank you.
Your time. Thank you. You are, you are going first on the next question, Terry.
I started going over on that last question.
If, if I was elected as DA, please discuss the specific steps you would take to ensure that your office does not run afoul of the racial justice act.
Well, you know, uh, I have the benefit of being the Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion in the District Attorney's Office. And one of the things that I did is I, I implemented a four-part, uh, implicit bias training that not only do the DA's have to participate, all of our inspectors and all of our administrative staff have to go through a four-part training on implicit bias. Module one talks about the science of implicit bias so that everybody understands we all come to the job with some implicit biases. But the most important one is module two because module two shows the historical perspective. But the most important one is module two, because module two shows the historical perspective of implicit bias. We're focusing on policies like redlining, showing our employees, uh, the residential maps of the nineteen twenties and thirties of Oakland and how East Oakland and West Oakland were the redlined areas and the Fruitvale was a redlined area. And the policies that existed in those areas in terms of lending policies up until nineteen sixty-eight. So I, we want our employees to understand that there are not only, there's a lot of government action and private action that have contributed to some of the issues we see in these areas of Oakland today. And so that when a case comes across your desk, uh, simply because it's a case out of East Oakland or West Oakland, we want our employees to understand that there is a lot of government action and, uh, private actions that have contributed to those areas being the way they are and not simply because black people live there or Hispanic people live there. And I think that we're on a very, very good, uh, road. Thank you.
Ms., uh, Pamela?
Sure. Um, the racial justice act is one of a series of legislative acts that have been passed in Sacramento to address the abuses um, that have taken place under the administration of most DA's throughout California and certainly in Alameda County as well. In Alameda County, black people are less than thirteen percent of the population, but we are twenty times more likely to be incarcerated than a white person. That only happens through the agency of the district attorney's office. Uh, the Center for Juvenile and Criminal Justice found that between two thousand ten and two thousand sixteen, a black child was sixty-five times more likely to be charged as an adult than a white child. And a Latino child was twenty-seven times more likely to be charged as an adult than a white child. So these kinds of racial injustices have been baked into this system for decades and it will take a huge shift culturally. The bias that has been played out and has devastated communities of color and families based on their race or their zip code is not implicit, it's been explicit. And so we've got to move beyond putting labels on things and call it what it is, which studies have shown that most of the racial disparities in sentencing, in charging, in parole and probation and conditions have all originated from the racial biases of the district attorneys and the judges.
Thank you. Um, and you will answer the next question first. What aspects of the current practices in the Alameda County District Attorney's Office would you change and why?
Number one, I would change our relationship with local law enforcement so that we are clear that we are not part of law enforcement agencies, that we are lawyers, that we are bound by the state bar rules and by the codes of ethics and that we have a duty to seek justice as independent actors. And that we expect officers not to, we're not going to suborn perjury. We're not going to hide evidence that those days are over, that we're not going to participate in seeking convictions and enhancements just for the sake of our own personal career. So that's number one. Number two, I will, uh, implement a, uh, standard of ethics that requires us to disclose exculpatory evidence that requires us to comply with the rules of evidence, which we know. And I will hold my deputies accountable to the rules and the standard of justice that everyone, regardless of race or age or air, religion or immigration status or gender or economic status, everyone is entitled to compassion, to respect and that we are going to administer justice in a fair manner and that we're going to be held accountable to this community. And we're going to follow the policies that the legislators and the voters have voted for. We're not going to charge juveniles as adults. We're not going to charge death penalty. We're not going to withhold exculpatory evidence and we're going to act like ethical lawyers.
Thank you. Terry, your question?
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you for the question, uh, cause I think that this is really an important question. You, you know, uh, should I be blessed to be the next district attorney of Alameda County? I would be the first African-American district attorney of Alameda County. And with that, I bring a different perspective. I bring a perspective where I have seen, uh, very, very high disparities in our criminal justice system, which is one of the reasons when I took over our juvenile division in twenty thirteen, Alameda County was averaging approximately three hundred juveniles in custody per week. Uh, by the time I left in twenty seventeen, Alameda County was averaging less than sixty juveniles in custody per week and that trend continues to this day. So when Ms. Price says that, you know, seventy percent or eighty percent of the juveniles, uh, are black, there's only about fifty-four of them in custody per, per week. Uh, so it's a very low number. Um, but I think that as they, but I also think that there will be a very strong message to everyone in the system, law enforcement included, that everyone will be held to a very high standard. Uh, you know, Alameda County has always been an office that's operated on a very high ethical plane. And I will continue to lead the office and make sure that we operate, uh, ethically as lawyers, uh, but also be a very strong voice, uh, to end a lot of the disparities that exist in our current system.
Thank you so much. Um, and this will be our final question for the evening, um, and before we go to closing statement. What can you do as district attorney? I'm sorry, this is for Terry. What can you do as district attorney that will enhance the lives and safety of residents in Alameda County?
Thank you. Well, I think first of all, as I, I stated in my opening, I think that you have to address uh, the level of violent crime that is currently occurring in Alameda County. I think that many of us, when we walk out, we're afraid when we're on the freeways, when we're driving through the city. Uh, I've talked to people who say that they're afraid to come to Oakland because of the level of crime. I think you have to address the violent crime that is occurring in this city. We are going to create a crime strategies unit, which is going to be made up of seven of our top attorneys. And their job is going to be to focus on the two thousand individuals that we know are driving about seventy percent of the violent and serious crime in Alameda County. And it's not, uh, a situation where we're just going to focus on those individuals and try to put them in jail. These individuals are going to be contacted and, and talked to. We're going to show them that there are educational opportunities and job opportunities for them to take a look at. However, uh, we are going to also let them know that if they don't put their guns down and if they continue to shoot, uh, and have shootouts in the community, that we are going to take them out of the community because it is making the city too violent, too many people feel unsafe. And when we want to address things like disparities and we want to address a lot of the real problems that exist in the city, it's very tough to do when you don't even feel safe walking out of your house. So that's got to be your first priority to deal with as the district attorney of Alameda County.
Thank you. Pamela, same question?
What is the question? I'm sorry.
What can you do as district attorney that will enhance the lives and safety of residents in Alameda County?
Number one, I can address the epidemic of guns, particularly ghost guns coming into Alameda County as well as the sale of illegal guns in Alameda County. We have got to reduce the number of guns to be able to get a handle on gun violence. As a district attorney, I can also enforce, um, orders that restrict people's access to guns. We've seen too many opportunities where people who should not have guns, whether they have demonstrated violence in, uh, setting of, of a familial setting or whether they are someone that is known to have mental health issues. We have to restrict, as a district attorney, my job is to make sure that I amplify and enforce strictly gun restriction orders that are in fact issued by the court and, and follow those permits that should not be, um, loosely allowed. I can engage with young people. That's number two. We know that young people need to be mentored, they need to be directed, they need conflict resolution tools to be able to not engage and get caught up in violent situations. I can engage with, and I will be a voice for women, um, in domestic violence situations and making sure that we are doing what we can to train our law enforcement and hold them accountable for responding appropriately to victims of domestic violence. Um, those are a few other things I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Terry, you will have one minute to do your closing statement.
First of all, thanks for having me, ladies and gentlemen. Um, you know, the, this is a very, very important race uh, because whoever wins this election is going to be the district attorney for the next four years in our county. And it is a county, uh, where the largest city in the county is hemorrhaging. It's hemorrhaging with violence, it's hemorrhaging with, uh, an out of control, uh, mental health problem and homeless encampments. Uh, and, you know, you're talking about who is going to be the person to take over this hundred billion dollar government agency that is extremely complicated to run. Uh, and one of the, one of the persons has apt, has never prosecuted a case in forty years of her legal career. Uh, I've spent a career in the prosecutor's office thirty-two years. Uh, I've been part of the budget process and understanding how to put forth a ninety-eight million dollar budget. Uh, there are a lot of, of, of moving parts that you have to have some experience as a prosecutor to effectively run the district attorney's office. Thank you.
Pamela, one minute?
Sure. Um, thank you for having me. My forty-year career in Alameda County has been a wonderful one. And there are three very profound, a lot of profound differences between my opponent and I. He is right. It is very important that we elect the right person in this election. This is the first time we've had an open election since nineteen thirty-nine. I've been a member of this, an active member of this community since nineteen seventy-eight. And I think proximity matters. I know that it does. And it's important that you know what you talk about when you talk about Oakland, you know why we love it and why I've stayed here all of these years. I have prosecuted successfully, tried cases all over Northern California and as far as Fresno and Amador County. And I have had an opportunity to serve and solve problems for the people of Alameda County. I'm a trusted leader in this community and I will be a trusted leader of the district attorney's office. Thank you.
Well, thank you both so much for participating in our forum this evening. Um, you've really helped the voters, um, get a better sense of who you are and your position. So thank you so much for being. I also want to point out, um, there's a sign behind me. I, I took, it's votersedge.org. It is an online collection of information regarding all of the candidates in the league, uh, that are, um, that are running. And we encourage you to view the candidates' resumes, platforms and positions there. And again, it's votersedge.org. In addition, your local leagues will be hosting numerous additional forums for local candidates who will be on your ballot. Please visit your local league's website using the links that you see on the screen and that will be posted in the chat. You can find information about the upcoming forums, including how to attend and how to submit questions in advance. You can also access recordings of previous forums there. In addition, please remember that you can, if you haven't yet, you can register to vote up until November first. Ballots will be mailed out on October tenth and you can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot in an official Alameda County ballot drop box. But please remember to cast your ballot on or before Election Day, which is November eighth. And finally, before we break, please respond to this very quick two-question poll. The league wants your feedback and we value it. You will also receive a one-question survey in your browser window after you leave the webinar. If you could, just please take a moment to give us your written feedback. I want to thank you all for attending tonight. And again, thank you to our candidates and on behalf of all of the leagues of Alameda County.